Big doings, committee.
Hello, Dan.
Thanks, the P-BAC.
Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Monday, June 23rd, meeting of the Public Works and Finance Committee. To my left is Councilmember Art Betsy. To his left is City Supervisor Gary Redner, and I'm Dan Carscallen. First item is the approval of the June 9th minutes.
Looked good to me.
I liked them, too, so we'll go ahead and approve them. Next up is a lot line adjustment on, at Main Street and Rodeo Drive, and something we've a little bit seen before, and Mike Ray will present to us.
Gentlemen?
Good afternoon.
Thank you. So we have the applicant Shelley Bennett requesting a lot line adjustment on a piece of property, basically at the intersection of North Main Street and Rodeo Drive, outlined in red here, basically about a, over a five-acre parcel. You can see Moscow Building Supply to the south, you've got Main Street to the west, Rodeo Drive to the north, and Jefferson Street to the east there. You can see that we've got some parcels. This is a replat of Parkview Estates addition, essentially carved out those six residential parcels on the east, on the west side of Jefferson Street, as well as left the larger commercial parcel. So taking a look at the zoning in the area, currently designated as motor business, as well as the property to the south and to the north, and to the northwest. We also have a medium-density residential, which is duplex, to the east, as well as to the west of this property. Looking at the lot requirements for the motor business zone, commercial uses basically don't have any minimum lot width or lot area requirements, and just have a front setback and a street-side setback of 10 feet, with no rear side yard setback. So looking at the larger piece, 5.14 acres, earlier on this year, submitted a lot division request, which was approved by council in February, to basically carve out a .42-acre piece in that southwest corner of this property. Had three conditions placed upon it. Now the applicant's proposing to relocate this parcel through the lot line adjustment process in that northwest corner, so just on the intersection of Main and Rodeo. Be a little bit less, .41 acres, instead of the .42. Be about 150 feet deep and 118.95 feet in width. So that would leave the resultant parcel, 4.73 acres there for the larger piece. And so this was the record of survey that was submitted. You can see that property, the previous division here, being shifted up here to that northwest corner, .41 acres. You also see a 26-foot-wide access and utility easement to the east, and that's coming in off of Rodeo Drive, so that's where the access will come from. So that'll be just vehicular access, as well as there's a sanitary sewer main. I believe that's proposed to be located in that area as well, and that'll be public. You also have a storm sewer easement being proposed here that extends all the way down here to the south, which would be conveyed into a stormwater swale, and that's going to remain private. So I just wanted to point out, with the original subdivision plat in 2000, as well as the replat last year, there was a condition within the development agreement that before any building permit is issued, and any portion of this property, that a traffic engineering study be completed in order to see if a traffic light at the intersection of Rodeo Drive and Highway 95 is warranted or not. It also states within that development agreement that that traffic engineering study will be reviewed and approved by ITD, Idaho Transportation Department, prior to any building permits being issued, any portion of Lot 1, of the replat of Lot 1, Block 1 of Parkview Estates addition. So basically carrying that condition over to this lot line adjustment recommendation. So staff's recommendation that you approve the lot line adjustment with that one condition, the applicant shall complete a traffic engineering study prior to the issuance of any building permits for the newly relocated .41-acre lot, or the remnant of Lot 1, of the replat of Lot 1, Block 1 of Parkview Estates addition. So we're just carrying that over, and that also shows up within those two development agreements for the subdivision and rezones that occurred during those years. And I know that the applicant wanted to address that condition tonight. So with that, I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have.
I know Art has one, at least.
Couple or three. So first off, does moving, essentially moving the plot, replat, up to the north, does that eliminate the request for the access to Highway 95 that was part of the previous one?
Correct. Yeah, the only access would have been off 95 in the previous submittal. That's the only, you know, portion that's adjacent to a public street right away. And so with the access being proposed off of Rodeo Drive, that would eliminate that condition.
Okay.
They'd certainly be able to, there's a 16-foot-wide skewed access that would show up just due south of that proposed parcel.
Still allowed by ITD.
They'd still be able to work with ITD in order to establish that, but it isn't required.
And on the 26-foot-wide access to that property, and theoretically the rest of the development in the interior of that lot, is 26 feet going to be wide enough to accommodate traffic coming and going through there?
Correct. Two-way traffic, per our standards, when our zoning code is 24 feet wide. This is, the only reason this is going to be a public easement is that there's a sanitary sewer line within it. And so it's really going to be a private drive with a public utility running in it. So that's the reason why it's not a public road, or, you know.
Okay. I guess if Scott has something from the applicant, you said something about talking about the traffic study?
Sure, yep. He wanted to address you.
Yeah, come on up, Scott.
Thank you, Scott Becker, Hodgins Associates, 405 South Washington. My concern is with the ITD review and approved traffic study. For ITD, they've got no incentive to actually approve any traffic study until a light is warranted, because the way I understand the agreement, there's two agreements. One is with ITD and the city, and that says if Rodeo Drive creates an issue that needs a traffic light, the city has to put one in. So the city made an agreement with the developer that if the traffic light is warranted, the developer has to install it, reconstruct it.
Right.
And so at this point, I think ITD will work with us. We'll have the traffic study completed this week and submitted to the city. But my concern is that there is no incentive for ITD to approve that study.
So language of the agreement, more than anything, I mean, it's not like the study's not going to happen.
Right, exactly. We're not trying to get out of the study, we're not trying to circumvent that. My concern is, you know, that, you know, the city may approve it, but ITD may drag their feet. Like I said, I've been assured that that's not the case, but I've also have some dealings, as I think the Highland District has had dealings, that they're not the fastest, and there's no incentive for them to hurry, to make it any faster.
Okay. Mike or Gary, you have any insight on that, or?
Well, I guess first I'd ask that Les McDonald be asked to comment, and then I'll, I can make some comments after that.
He can sit up here with the big boys if he wants.
The issue of a traffic assessment on this property has been around for a long, long time.
Right.
So I think everybody's aware of the need, and has been aware of the need for a considerable amount of time. The concern I have at this stage is that the traffic study has been put off on numerous occasions with former actions on the land, lot divisions, other portions of the development, including the most recent, being the six residential lots to the east. That being said, the concern I have in what could happen is that if the building permit process proceeds forward on this smaller lot that's being developed, or formulated here, and in some fashion that proceeds to the point that a building permit could be issued prior to any final acceptance by ITD of the traffic study, there could be results there that might impact whether or not a building would occur. So for instance, if the traffic study does in turn show, after submittal and review, and potentially revisions, that a signal is indeed warranted, how are we going to assure that that is constructed in a timely fashion? And would that construction in any way affect whether or not development of that single parcel would occur? There's a bit of unknown there, and, you know, the assumption, I think, on all the parties' parts, is that it will all happen. Okay? And so, yeah, I don't really have a problem with that, it's just a question of how do we ensure that it does happen, or avoid any potential stickiness along the way that could occur if somehow the developer of that small lot gets partway through, and then the relations break down about who's paying for what with a $120,000 signal, or something like that. And so I just see a lot of potential there for some problems, and I like to avoid that. Again, going back to the issue of timing, I think all the parties know that this has been a requirement for a long time. And so to now reach a point to say, okay, now we're wanting to make sure that somehow ITD doesn't hold up what may be development of this lot, is a bit problematic for me. I think, I think this study perhaps could have happened a little earlier in the process to avoid this situation. What I think Scott and I talked about today is that we've not yet received any applications for development of this property, just this lot line adjustment process. So our experience with ITD on review of traffic studies has been pretty good. We've had pretty good response, and pretty timely response on those types of things. I'm not really concerned about ITD getting back to us, and back to the applicant on this review. I would expect that if we see that traffic study maybe yet this week, city will review it, we'll send it off to ITD, you know, we'll probably have comments turned around within a week or two, I would imagine. I'm anticipating that will all occur before we even see an application for any development on the property, and I would suggest at this point, just let it run its course. If we start seeing a problem with response time with ITD, and getting to resolution on the traffic study, perhaps we revisit the question of timing. But for, at this point, I would recommend just letting it proceed with the ITD language as is in those development agreements, with the assumption that ITD's going to be responsive. If they prove otherwise, then perhaps revisit the issue.
Well, and I guess, it's not like we're not going to have the study done.
Right.
It's just that it may not.
It's just timing.
It's just timing of approval.
And it's that, that concern of, you know, if, if somehow the study is delayed a bit, the building process proceeds, you've got a developer that's anticipating that they're going to be able to start building something, and then we get hung up on a question of whether or not whatever's coming out of the, this traffic study is going to be built, and when, it just, it just creates some, some interesting situations. You know, we may end up with some kind of an additional agreement between the developer, or of the, of the overall subdivision, and the city about timing of when any improvements are made, to then allow individual site development to occur. I foresee that.
Yeah.
Because it may be that, you know, the light, if there's a light requirement, it may not go until next spring, for instance, just because of timing of construction, that type of thing.
What does it take to modify an agreement?
Bring a chair.
Well, as Les indicated, and my opinion is really close to Les's, and that is that all you're doing today is you're adjusting a lot line, which is the same thing you did on the, on the southern end of the lot. At any time, the developer can come back in and ask for some relief. Again, I, if it turns into something that delays the developer from moving ahead, then certainly come back before the council and say, look, we've done everything we can, we're ready to go. Your staff is of the opinion that we should be able to go ahead, but we don't have ITD's approval. Come back in and request some relief at that point. I agree, one of the things with, and I've talked to Shelley about this in the past, is we take this huge tract of land, and we're starting to cut it up, and pretty soon you get to the same situation we've seen in other subdivisions, where you delay public improvements to the point where you have one or two lots that are having to cover the cost of the construction of the street.
Right.
And those lots never get developed. In this case, I'm not saying that's what's going to happen.
Right.
But if the issue just has to do with timeliness, I think we can address that.
Yeah.
Anyway, that would be my thought there. And the developers never indicated, hey, we're in, we want to develop this piece of property, if it needs a light, we'll deal with it.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I think I've heard from the beginning, too.
Yeah.
And I can understand that, you know, they don't want this, something holding up just that corner development, and, you know, we don't know what the study says now, but, I mean, personally, I don't see that being the trigger, you know, maybe the next one or two, but.
Well, we had that discussion as well, that when the duplex housing, I think, is what's on the east side, is that correct? That it wasn't intended to generate a whole lot of traffic, and it had some other ways in and out of the subdivision. The commercial development on the southern side would have had a different entrance than this one. So this really is one that will have a direct impact on that intersection.
It changes the entrance.
Well, the other, the other thing to keep in mind when it comes to the traffic studies, it's not just this block, it's the entire subdivision.
Oh, yeah, it's, right.
Right, it's the effect of all of it, and, you know, better than three-quarters of that's been developed today.
You know, I'm not telling them how they're going to do it, but who's to say that this first one doesn't, okay, you got, there's this much extra going into the light fund, you know, that, when, when that goes down.
Do you know?
Who are you?
I'm Shelley Bennett, 213 South Main Street. Thank you. Do you know how long, when you look at a traffic study, do you know what triggers the state to require a light? I mean, shouldn't you know when you see the traffic study if it's going to trigger a light or not? I mean, is it really something that we'd have to wait for the Department of Transportation to review? That's my main thing, is that we're looking at something that's going to warrant, this piece is going to be very low traffic. So couldn't you look at it? I mean, my big thing is, is that they have a dead, they have a drop-dead date of July 11th, the buyer does. And so we've gone through this process, and through this process of getting forward. Admittedly, it'd be the landowner's issue if we can't get through this, but can't you look at it and say, this is going to trigger a warrant a light, or not warrant a light when you get it? And shouldn't we be able to not have to wait for them, for them to apply for a building permit? Which you should see within this week.
Okay, that's coming soon. Well, part of, part of the consideration is that ITD may look at things a little differently than the city does, as we've experienced in the past. We'll have a pretty good feel, I think, as to whether or not the study is demonstrating the need based on a level of service assessment. But it is an ITD facility, and so they have to be part of that process. And sometimes they look at things a little bit differently than we do, and may see some aspects that, you know, they think are more critical, perhaps, than we might. So they do have to be, in my opinion, part of that process.
Mike, did you have something?
Yeah, I was going to say, it's at the issuance of a building permit, and so we could go through the building permit review process and get that rolling. If they were going to submit this week, you know, we'd have our typical review time, and probably multiple iterations of the project, and so we could certainly get that reviewed, and pretty much close to approval, or we could get it approved, you know, and then we'd just wait on the traffic engineering study to be approved by ITD, and then we could go ahead and issue the permit, so.
Well, and hopefully, as they're running concurrently, that the traffic study review by ITD will run with the, any building permit applications, and, you know, be in a similar timeframe.
Chips may fall together whether we know what we're doing or not.
Right.
The night has had one other comment. The reason, the reason that we haven't done this sooner is because the sale of the lot fell through, and then the access, we were hoping for a full access onto Highway 95, and then that was a right skewed access only. So, and then even at this point, we have to make some fairly wild assumptions that, you know, we have to decide how that lot's going to be divided up, you know, anything that's close to 95, it's going to have a visibility, and will be higher use, but, you know, if a Safeway store went up there, it would, you know, it would definitely trigger a light, so.
Right.
We have to make some assumptions based on what the likelihood of the rest of the lot being developed.
Well, yeah, ITD's kind of been the holdup from the beginning here because of, you know, whether they allowed that entrance or not, so.
Right, right. Well, and part of the, part of what we have to look at in, in the report when it comes in, is what are those assumptions?
Right.
You know, when you're looking at undeveloped land, you have to make some assumptions about, you know, what that potential development would be, and typically, it's the highest and best use allowed by the zone. And so that can sometimes be a little bit higher than what ultimately ends up being developed.
Right.
But without a firm development plan, it's really the way you have to make the assumptions.
So back to the question at hand, Art, I don't know about you, but I don't have a problem with recommending approval of the lot line adjustment.
No, that's the easy part, that is.
So then, really, I guess then everything else just kind of is, see how things work out. Because really, that's the only thing we're dealing with today.
Well, approving it with the condition, and then.
With the current conditions, yes.
And then, and subject to the development agreements, and as the issue unfolds, if there becomes an issue, we can, developers free to bring it back and have a separate consideration of that. And we do have a council meeting prior to, I believe on the 7th of July, if everything goes as quickly as it may, should be able to have some information on that date.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead and.
Thank you.
Fair enough.
Thanks, guys. Next up on the agenda, Les gets to switch chairs, and talk to us about the Pluse Basin Aquifer Committee Management Plan Updates and the Moscow Action Plan.
Well, back in 1992, the Pluse Basin Aquifer Committee adopted a groundwater management plan, which was a pretty long, drawn-out process to develop, and to work through all the various entities, because all of the entities that are members of P-BAC at that time went through an approval process with their respective boards, attorney reviews, et cetera, et cetera. That plan ultimately was adopted in 92, and has.
Having trouble hearing in the back.
Has continued to service pretty well over the years. It is still the guiding document that is being used by P-BAC in moving forward with studies, and ultimately pilot projects and potential solutions to declining water supplies within the basin. About a year and a half ago, P-BAC noted that there was probably a need to make some updates to that plan. It was determined that they did not want to go through a complete rewrite of the plan, but in a, really in essence, to just provide more of an addendum to the plan that said, here are the current conditions as of 2014, and how we're doing on these various tasks that were identified within the plan itself. And that assessment of the basin, you know, there were, there were a lot of assumptions made based on modeling back in the 90s, how is it working out? So that type of an update. Within the plan, there are some components that are action plans for each of the entities that were members of P-BAC at the time, so the counties, universities, and Moscow and Pullman. We were asked, the representatives of P-BAC were asked to review those plans, and to provide updates to them on status, and any suggested changes that should be included within this addendum to the overall groundwater management plan. So I took on the task of preparing that, and what is in your packet is kind of a two-page summary of what the original 1992 version for the Moscow Action Plan said versus what I have recommended for the 2014. And depending on whether you printed it in color or not, it starts in each bullet here, it starts with one that's in black ink, and the other in green, in my case, or at least a light gray, if you printed it in black and white. What's in black is the original verbiage, and then what is in green is the either comment or recommended change that I prepared to give to P-BAC. And so it's been asked that we go ahead and run this through committee and council for approval of the revisions, so that can be then included in the package that P-BAC is putting together as the amendment to the 92 plan. So if you'd like, I can kind of run through and touch on those. I'm assuming you've had a chance to read them, I hope.
I guess the, the big difference is, you know, what, what are we looking at that's, you know, I, I don't see anything onerous, you know, or, or really any real major changes, other than we've actually completed some, some of these bullets, so.
Right, yeah, really, I was attempting to keep it as, you know, minimal as possible in terms of changes, and then just providing updates.
Right.
There was a fair amount of discussion at P-BAC about the issues of the 1% and the 125% of the 81 through 85 average flows for each of the entities versus the group as a whole, and the basin as a whole. So there was a little bit of language change that's in that first bullet item that talks about that. Really, it's in the second sentence, where before, there was some language about, at no time shall the accumulated total pumping exceed. It's been modified to attempt to limit the accumulated total pumping to a targeted maximum of. So it's a little bit different angle, rather than a, you know, this is a hard, firm cap, recognizing that, you know, over the last almost two, well, two decades plus now, that things have changed a bit, and we're continuing to grow, and we're doing what we can as a group and as individual entities to, you know, minimize the amount of growth in our production, but, you know, it can't necessarily be a hard and firm number in this situation. So that's probably one of the biggest tweaks that occurs, is in that very first bullet. Some of the others, continuing summer-winter differential water rates, we've gone away from that, yes.
In your revision, it says, continue a conservation-based rate structure for single-family residential customers. Are we not going to discuss multifamily apartments, businesses, within the structure of the rates, or are they incorporated elsewhere by way of attempting to propagate conservation?
It's, it's really addressed through propagating conservation. We have, through two rate studies now, determined that we did not want to attempt to do a tiered structure for commercial and multifamily. And a lot of that has to do with trying to establish, what kind of a tier would you set? Because if you have a small commercial facility that uses a fairly small volume of water, say it's an insurance office, and have a restroom, well, you can set a tier based on that, that, that works. But then maybe you have, you know, a much larger commercial endeavor, or a, you know, 20-unit apartment or 40-unit apartment complex, well, that, that same tier structure doesn't work, because they're always going to be way up in a third tier, if you're basing it off the small commercial. And so that was the struggle of trying to set that kind of a tiered structure in something other than single-family type units. That's why we've held it to just single families. Addressing it otherwise, as you suggest, through the conservation efforts, and, you know, more directly in that regard.
So is there, I didn't see it, but is there a bullet in there that addresses that, about how do we take care of the rest of the city that isn't residential?
There is, to a certain extent, and let me, let me go on through, we'll, we'll catch that here in just a second, so. So, yeah, essentially on that second bullet, you know, we, we have a conservation structure for residential, so continue that, rather than a winter-summer.
Right.
Which we don't use anymore. Requiring developers to project water use, I've actually recommended just deleting that one. Generally, we have not required that, primarily because we're not seeing large, high-water use-type developments, and so in our history, I don't know that we've ever really implemented that. We just don't see that, that big user coming in the door, it's more typical subdivisions and smaller commercial. Program, participating programs offer free water conserving devices to customers, we're doing that, we continue to do that. On this one, I had put, develop a formal conservation program, which would indicate, or which would include actions such as offering free water conserving devices to customers, or a toilet rebate program. It's been suggested by Councilmember Steed that we modify that one a little bit to something more along the lines of develop a formal conservation program, excuse me, continue the formal conservation program, which would include actions such as offering free water conserving devices to customers, and consider adding a toilet replacement rebate, rebate program. There's a couple ways we could word that, and we have a program in place now where we're doing water conservation, there's, you know, a lot of education outreach, there are devices that are, you know, free devices that are given, there's a whole variety of things that are done. What we've not done is adopt a formal conservation plan, and that's still pending, it's something I'm reviewing the draft right now.
Right.
And anticipate that coming forward yet this summer. So, you know, we can, we can tweak that a little bit if we'd like, but I would be comfortable making the, the suggested changes that Councilmember Steed included, if, if you guys are as well.
Yep.
Okay. There is an item about creating a conservation fund to deal with paying for devices. We essentially, oh, and to fund research projects recommended, recommended by the committee, and hire assistants to implement the programs, it's kind of a catch-all type of a task. I've narrowed that down to continue membership in the committee with funding for studies and research, because that was, I thought, the most important aspect of that line item. We are already doing water conservation programs, we're paying for it through our regular rate structure.
Kind of getting picked up in the other.
In the other items, right.
Yep.
And, you know, implementing program, we have staff on board for running our conservation program. So we've, we've done those things and continue to do that.
If I may. I always get nervous about an outside group, even one for which we are a member, dictating that we fund certain things. So I would propose that you change that to continue membership in committee with funding for research, or studies and research projects as authorized by the city council.
Oh, right.
Sure. Kind of makes it a little more explicit that way. Kind of makes it a little more explicit that way.
Adopt local codes requiring new water users to utilize water conserving appliances. That's been done, so essentially, we're complete. Meter city use of water, that's done, those meters are in place, and we read those consistently. Calibrate consumer meters, we have a program to do that and replace failing meters, so we note here, just to continue the program, to update those meters as needed. Address issues in a comprehensive, water issues in comprehensive plan, they are addressed in the comprehensive land use plan, which I believe this was intended to address, so that has been completed. Obviously, as I mentioned earlier, we'll do a conservation plan as well. Participate in education programs, schools, billstuffers, et cetera. So, I've modified that to continue to participate in education programs, just an update. Encourage recycling at building permit level. What did I change? I added water, I added water to that, it was all encourage water recycling, because that's specific to this task. Continue to make city wastewater treatments effluent available to University of Idaho, that one continues as is.
As does the next one.
As does the next one, programs that are ongoing.
If I may, more time. On the available to use, effluent available to University of Idaho, I said as per agreement or something, I can work that language out, but again, I don't think this document should be dictating our relationship with the university.
You know, I don't, yeah, honestly, this is just...
This seems more aspirational than binding.
Yeah, right. Well, it is, but I will tell you that for the last 20 years, as the city of Moscow experienced its growth, we were consistently chastised or castigated by either Pback or membership in Pback, because we exceeded certain limitations, voluntary limitations. In response, we made the point that we use Wannapum Water, which is recharged, and none of the other entities within Pback, except for Leighton County, utilizes rechargeable aquifer water. Also, because we use that Wannapum Water, which is heavy in minerals, we have to flush our fire hydrants and dead-end lines, which uses a significant amount of water. Les, correct?
Yes, it does.
We need to do that for water quality, yet there is no credit given back to us for utilizing rechargeable aquifer water, or because of the quality of that water being less quality than the Grand Rhond Aquifer, we get no credit for that either. So, we've been making that point. I hope we're making some headway, but we do want to make these, even though they are aspirational, that they actually kind of reflect the situation as well.
Okay. So, the next item then would be establish demonstration products utilizing low water requirements, landscaping parks, et cetera. We've done that, we continue to do that whenever the opportunity arises, so essentially, that task is completed. The next one is essentially the same, other than the last term pumpage was modified to production, update there. Continue submitting data to the committee computer program in a timely manner, just modified the language slightly to continue input to the committee of the city's monitoring efforts, monitoring of our production. There were a number of sub-bullets under the next one related to sure groundwater quality is protected in the basin. I have hopefully consolidated that into a shorter version, which is comply with all state and federal regulations pertaining to hazardous materials, stormwater disposal, solid waste disposal, sewage sludge disposal, non-point source, household contributions, and well construction and abandonment. Hopefully, even though it's a long sentence, just brought it down a little bit. And I am recommending one additional goal be added, which is to explore possible expansion of wastewater treatment plant effluent reuse. And that's something we've been considering under our own Phase 5 efforts for temperature. The university certainly has done what it could to expand their use, and they may have some more potential. We've talked in the past about the possibility of maybe irrigating some parkland, things of that nature, so I think that would be a, a good aspiration for the city to continue looking at whether or not we ultimately can achieve that or not, as remains to be seen.
I'd still like to see a little more clause in there someplace about encouraging conservation in the apartments, businesses, and commercial categories. There's, within it, it's, we call out explicitly the residential customers, and I'd like to see either broaden that out or also put in another clause to encourage conservation among those other entities.
Well, and the overall, the overall plan within Pback for everybody does talk about conservation for all entities. And so, I think that the global piece is probably there already. When it comes to just Moscow's action plan, which is this, we could certainly do something along that line. I guess an alternative I could suggest would be to address it within our conservation plan, because it does have a lot of aspects that address not just residential, but the other entities in the system as well.
I would be comforted to just have that incorporated, even in that document.
If I can propose a, maybe a goal? Promote programs to encourage conservation and sustainable water use by multiple family uses, or multiple residential uses and commercial uses?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd be happy with that.
That sounds good.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, other than that, I think that it's, I would move...
It's in good shape. I think it reads a whole lot better now than it did before for shizzle.
Good. Okay.
All right, so we'll go ahead and recommend that for approval. Oh, John, did you have something you wanted to? We've got to have you on the big mic, so...
Did you get my address today?
Oh, I don't remember it, so...
John Kimberling, 1923 East E. First of all, thank you to the city leadership for continuing to lead on this issue. I was actually having a conversation with Dr. Pierce the other day about the water, and I know this document, which I haven't studied closely before coming today, you know, talks about goals of future, but I, and I remember, I got to serve on the last Water Rate Study Committee, and I know there was discussion about a certain amount of the money being set aside for possible infrastructure, an item that wasn't really earmarked specifically, and Les can correct me if I'm misstating that at all. But I do know that one of the things that I think the city did in recent times that was really positive was the feasibility study about some possible water storage up on Moscow Mountain, and I don't know if there's someplace in this document for acknowledgement of that, recognition of that, or some just type of comment about that, that the city is being very forward-thinking about the possibilities. We were told at the first Palouse Basin Water Summit almost a decade ago, that we're not going to conserve our way out of our situation, and so some other option, some other resource might be an answer that we have to seriously look at down the road. So, I just thought it might be worth mentioning that, and...
Actually, that kind of fits in with what we've been doing so far, where another goal statement might be to continue to explore alternative sources of water, because we're already doing it, as I recall from some of our prior meetings.
Yeah, we certainly could. And again, I think it may also be addressed in other sections where we've talked about studies that are ongoing and other efforts. I know Pullman had a similar type of thought with some of the work they've done on ASR feasibility.
ASR?
So, yeah, whether it's, ASR being aquifer storage and recovery. So, yeah, I mean, it could probably be done either way. We could certainly add something along the lines that you suggested of...
Yeah, because we're doing, so I think it falls into one of those continue statements.
It's a significant event in my mind that we did that. We're always going to be looking at conservation, other options, but a springboard to that someday could be falling back on, on the study that you had done.
And I think it's a good idea to have it in there as a mental placeholder as well to remind us that this is one of our goals that we should keep working on.
Yeah, at some point, it's going to become less of a theory and more of a necessity, so, you know, it, it may not be in yours or my lifetime, but who's to say when, so...
Yep.
As long as we keep our, keep our eye on the ball, that's the big thing.
Well, and also, just following up on Supervisor Reedner's comment, the way I read this, we have been below our target since somewhere in the middle of 2005, Gary, so...
Agreed, I agree.
Let's, let's emphasize that, too, that we've done some really good work. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, John.
So, perhaps the added additional goal would be continue examination of alternate water supply options as approved by the city council?
Yep, absolutely. Anything else for the, for this item? So, we'll go ahead and forward it for approval?
Yes, sir.
Anything else for the good of the order?
I have nothing, sir.
The chairman, I think, is.
I think we can go ahead and adjourn. Thanks.